Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight's order of business for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is seven twenty-three P. M. We are starting this a little late. This is an electronically held special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council Virtual Meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, council members, please remember to state the city and state in which you are residing in at the moment for the meeting. Councilman Abdullah?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilman Bazey?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilman Conston?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilwoman Malonowski Maxwell?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilman Muscat?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, County of Wayne.
And Councilman Wentzle?
Here, in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to have Councilman Wentzle lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have agenda approval.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we approve the agenda and the order of business January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven P. M. Number three A submitted.
Support.
This is number three, Councilman. Three A is the.
Three, I apologize, three.
Support by Councilman Conston. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair?
Muscat?
I move City Council add on the appointment approval for mayor as three B.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Abdullah.
No, that's me.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Abdullah. This is where we start getting our clerk's office confused.
That's okay. Good, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, Councilman, okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Conston?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Wentzle?
Um, now, are we voting on this where we can't add anything on the agenda?
Well, then, I was saying.
We're voting on the agenda.
Voting on the agenda as it is in front of us.
You can't make a motion to add anything up.
Okay, Miss Wachy. Councilman Wentzle, how are you voting?
I'm thinking. I vote no.
Malonowski is yes. At this time, I don't know if we can go any further. Clerk, what's your theory on this?
I mean, the most, the agenda was not approved to. So the motion didn't go through, so it was defeated.
Council Chair?
Mr. Muscat's motion was premature.
Council Chair?
Muscat?
I move that City Council approve the agenda with the addition of three B for a vote on the mayoral appointment.
Support.
Okay, support by Councilman Bazey. As far as discussion goes, Councilman Muscat, you know, I have been very strict in allowing anything to be added to a Zoom session meeting. Last week, I tried to allow it, and it ended up a big old mess, and I'm trying to avoid that. It is on the agenda for next Tuesday already. I have a place card for it because the agenda was cut off at twelve noon today. So the vote will take place next Tuesday, according to next week's agenda.
Council Chair, a motion was put on the floor, and it was not, it was not accepted. A second motion was put on the floor and seconded. You must take a vote.
Councilman, that was my discussion.
Madam Chair, you have to take a vote on this motion.
You're not listening.
I am listening, and you aren't listening. You're violating the charter.
Please do not interrupt me. I'm, that was my discussion. It wasn't my final decision. That was my discussion and what my thoughts were, and I'm able to do that. Is there any further discussion in regards to this motion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Conston?
Again, I, I, I don't understand certain council members trying to rush things and bully us. I, I really don't. It's just very disappointing. It's, we, we have the special meeting. We are going to discuss or vote on the contract for the Berwin Kitchen, on the City Council vacancy. It hasn't been delayed. We've just been tied three-three. Now, there's the attempt to jam something down everybody's throats. The, you know, law favors an open, transparent process where everyone is included. Everyone gets a vote. Everyone's background is checked. It's what we've done for, for treasurer, for clerk in the past, for mayor. So it's the business practice we've always done.
Who did your background check?
Councilman, please. Point of order. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I'd just like to point out to our, to my fellow council members, this is exactly the problem that we are having. I'm telling you, we are, there's laughter about this. People are getting their popcorn to watch this stuff. The more we delay this thing of picking another additional council member, okay, to be added to our body, the more we're going to continue to just have this, this different, you know, separate groups and over and over and over and over and over again, voting of three-three. I mean, if you look at it, we're not on the agenda, we can't even agree. Just to have an agenda, we can't even agree. Nevertheless, picking a council member, nevertheless picking a mayoral candidate to be appointed. So I beg my fellow council members. I know somebody mentioned flipping the coin. I don't know if I want to pick a, a, a council member that way, but we got to get another council member on there because that's the only way that it's going to be an uneven vote, and then we're going to continue to be able to go on, you know, move forward. This thing's happened too many times on everything. I mean, there's nothing that we are agreeing on. I'm, I'm telling you, it's a joke. I, I, I serve on a lot of boards. This doesn't happen. But if you have an even number of council members like we've got right now, three-three, we're going to continue to have this type of stuff. So please, I beg you guys, let's hope and pray that we pick somebody. We got two good candidates to select from or actually three. Let's pick somebody, let's move on, please. Thank you.
Can we have a vote on this motion?
Councilman Wentzle, please.
Okay, um. First of all, Councilman Abdullah, there is, is this, is a three-three split on the council appointment seat, and that's each, each six of us have an opinion on who they should be. So you can't come, you can't blame anyone for voting the way they do. It's unfortunate, but the change of mind just to break the tie or flip a coin, that, that's not the way you do it. You vote the way you think you should vote. I mean, i- if it's, if it's, if it's a, a three-three tie till next November, then we let the residents vote the way it should be. Council members should not have the power to appoint council people or a mayor. That's the residents' job to do that.
I agree.
I, I agree. I think we should keep this a tie for the council member and the mayor until next November and let, let the residents vote on this. And another thing is, uh, I'm, I'm changing my vote for the agenda. I'm, I'm accepting the agenda because at our close, at our study session meeting, we have several residents that stated that they wanted to see background checks or, I, I'm not in favor of background checks, resumes on these candidates, and very, a lot of people spoke up. And I don't want anyone to think that we're not letting them know who these candidates are. And I want to change, you know, change my vote. I will accept the, change my vote to accept the agenda and carry on with this meeting and have the vote for mayor next week. Thank you.
The agenda passes due to the change in vote by Councilman Wentzle to a yes from a no. Okay, we have Christina Laslow?
Wait a minute. This is, this is. It's not a, no, 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 that's what I was going to say. I, I raised my hand to speak during public comments, so I, I jumped.
Okay, sorry about that.
What do we do, what do we do now with the motion that I proposed, that it was seconded?
I'm sorry, but that motion was first, so that overrules everything. So at this point, I'm going to say, dear council members, on Monday, December seventh, two thousand and twenty, we had the pleasure of meeting the prospective city council candidates to fill, to fill the unexpired term of City Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. At this time, I am requesting your honorable body nominate all the candidates that were interviewed, and they are as follow. Zuhair Abdalhak, Moby Dune, and William Toby Zarako. Okay, I'm going to recall and see who you would vote for. Councilman Muscat?
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Council Chair, we need a motion in a second on that.
Okay, do you hear a motion to continue?
Council Chair? Council Chair, I move that City Council open up the nominations and, and for those who, who, um, applied for it as outlined in three A.
Support.
Second.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. At this time.
All in favor?
Pardon?
Madam Chair?
A vote in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, at this time, we will go forward. Councilman Muscat?
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Councilman Conston?
Uh, Moby Dune.
Councilman Bazey?
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Councilman Abdullah?
Moby Dune.
Councilman Wentzle?
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Malonowski is Moby Dune. We are in a tie. I'm going to ask us to vote again. We're going to vote a few times here. Would anybody consider changing their vote so we can move forward from this gridlock?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Conston?
I nominate Moby Dune for the vacant council position. He ran for the position. He has a master's in public administration, grew up in Dearborn Heights, is married, owns a home here. I nominate Moby Dune.
Councilman Muscat?
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Councilman Bazey?
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Councilman Abdullah?
Moby Dune.
Councilman Wentzle?
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Malonowski is still Moby Dune. At this time, we are still at a tie. We will bring that, this back the next meeting, and I would really ask everybody to consider possibly changing. I, I don't know the reasons. Do some soul searching and see if you really are, you know, if you can, because eventually, I'm sure they're both going to end up in there. We're going to have a vacancy one way or another, probably. Councilman Wentzle?
I, I just want everyone, all the residents, to know that, um, I looked at every avenue possible for having a special election on this, and my, in my searching and investigating on this, I found out that it's a, it's a charter revision that has to be done to have a special election in this situation, which when we do review the charter, we should do something like this special election. It's about a fifty thousand dollar bill to have a special election. But the change of charter requires the people's vote, so it's, it's, it's a catch-twenty-two. I'm in favor of holding a special election. If at all possible, if anyone out there knows some legal loophole where we can have a special election on this, please get ahold of us. I don't think it's the councilperson's job to change the dynamics of the city council or the mayor's position. It's up to the residents to vote on this. And like I say, I hold true to that, and I hope this is a tie all the way to November, that the residents vote.
Councilman Muscat?
I can't agree with Councilman Wentzle more. I, I, I thought that once, once we did this three, four times, uh, you know, again, the residents deserve to pick who they want to lead up. They're given, you know, the, the charter, as old as it is, gives seven people the authority to, to do as they please on appointments. That is so archaic, it, it, it's ridiculous. And, and I know when they first started out, it was all good. They, they really did a great job by, by putting the charter together. But, you know, the dynamics of the city has changed so much that, that the residents need to speak out and vote. They should be picking who, who's going to speak for them and who's not going to speak for them. So I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Wentzle about a, a special election. Uh, you know, you know, I vote for somebody. If I make a mistake voting for someone, that's on me. But then, if the city votes on the wrong person, it's on everybody. And seven people shouldn't have control of that on their own. That's, that's how I feel.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
Well, as much as I'd love to agree with you guys, I totally agree with all due respect to both council members because for us to wait until next November to pick another.
I know.
Council member would, would just not make any sense because as you can see clearly from today, in the last ten minutes, we've disagreed three times on just an agenda, just putting something on the agenda or just having an agenda. So the way, go through this all the way until November would be just total chaos and probably nothing would get done on, on, on the council. I would love to have the residents selected. I would absolutely love it, but to sit and have us as a council pay for a special election, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars would not be us doing our fiduciary duty to our residents, spending that kind of money to just have a special election for just a council member. So I'm hoping and praying that either one of us changes their mind or it could also happen, maybe one of the candidates changes their mind about being a candidate, and that would help move matters forward. But to sit and wait until November in this type of a setting is absolutely total chaos.
This is, this is comments from the council table. Councilman Conston, you're last, and we're going to move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And briefly, you know, it's been said, we're a nation of laws, not of men. This is the procedure set forward. In the past, we've had vacancies on council that have taken time to fill. Uh, the, the death of the mayor was unexpected and made what was a very difficult year even more difficult. I believe that the candidate I nominated has the background and experience necessary, and there's some people doing some maneuvering to, uh, put pressure on people. But with that, it's, it's the process, the legal process, we have to follow it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to move on to reports from city officials. This is city clerk senior authorizing signature for kitchen remodel at the Berwin Center Recreation Contract. Madam Chair? Madam Clerk?
Yeah, we skipped over pub, um, public hearings and comments on agenda items.
I'm sorry, you know what? This is such a short.
It's crazy, yep.
And I have that highlighted too. Okay, next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This would be only on the Berwin Agenda Item since it's the only item on there. You have two minutes. Does anybody have any contact con, sorry, comments in regards to that item? Okay, I've got Suzanne Todd.
What about if you had the people that attend this meeting vote?
I'm sorry, but this is comment on agenda items. That is for the Berwin Center only.
Oh, I can't comment on the.
No, this is agenda items.
Madam Chair, I'm just curious, how would that not be an agenda? I mean, it's on.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. I'm talking about the vote for council person.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. Go ahead.
No. Why not take a straw vote of the people that are here? They're the ones that are most interested. And then you, then you know what the people want. I mean, is, is that legal? I don't know.
I don't think.
No.
I don't think, Gary's picking at that.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Well, I think what would work based on what Suzanne Todd is mentioning, and it's not that, that, that crazy of an idea. We don't necessarily go based on what that vote is, but that would tell us, and I could tell you for myself included, what the residents at least think, and then they may or may not sway my opinion or somebody else's opinion. But that would not be an end-all, of course not. So we couldn't, if there was, like right now, there's a hundred and ninety-one people. If, I don't know, a hundred and eighty people picked for one candidate, we wouldn't, that, he wouldn't automatically, he, he wouldn't automatically get it. But if a hundred and eighty people said for one candidate, I for one would say, hey, hey, you know, maybe that's the direction we may have to go. So it's not that bad of an idea. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
No, I'm sorry, I'm going in order of councilmen. I have Christina Laslow.
Hi, Council Chair, um, and council members. Um, just, just to point out, your honorable body was voted to make decisions for the population. I, I know, I, I know this is a hard decision, and believe me, I've had seventeen years of experience to know that sometimes it's a lot easier to say, okay, residents, you make the decision. But you were voted on by the residents to make the decision. Obviously, I didn't vote for all of you. I voted for some of you, but either way, you are my leader, you are everybody's leader. You are there to lead, and you are there to choose the appointment until the next election. Having said that, you're wondering what the population did. Sticking to your duty, the population did speak, and there was almost three thousand people that showed up and voted for Moby Dune. If you want to look, I know you're talking about charter and it being antiquated. Other cities solved this problem, knowing that it was hard for the council members, and other cities, including some of our neighbors, choose the next highest vote getter. Guess what, folks? Your next highest vote getter is Moby Dune.
No.
Whether I voted for him or not, does matter. But your next highest vote getter in the last election was Moby.
Thank you, Beth.
Cities. I'm sorry, do I have the floor? Council Chair?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, in other cities, the next highest vote getter, the one that didn't win, would be the person that goes on council.
That'd be Steve Henry.
Turn out, that's your out. Thank you.
Unfortunately, Steve Henry did not apply for the job. Had he applied for it, it might, the outcome might be different. You know, we asked him for entrusted parties, and he had a fair chance like everybody else.
Oh, I know. I'm just saying that, the correction, she said the second highest vote getter last election was Moby Dune. Nothing against Moby Dune, but Moby Dune did not run in the last election, and Steve Henry was the next highest vote getter. Just to clear.
Correct.
Ms. Shalhadi?
Yes, um, thank you. I'm curious if each candidate, if each councilperson can tell us why he or she is voting for the applicants and what's so special about them. And I just want every councilperson to remember that the citizens, citizens of the city are watching, and they're going to remember when it comes for, to the next vote. Thank you.
Members, would you like to go through and I'll call on you and tell the public why you're voting the way you are?
Sure.
Councilman Muscat?
I'm voting for Zuhair Abdalhak because for many years, he attended city council meetings, voiced his opinion on many subjects, is a wealth of knowledge of things that have happened in this city since, God, fifteen years ago. We have worked very hard, countless hours, countless nights, trying to find out where the money, which we think was misappropriated, has gone. It's still gone. So I can't tell you how many hours that we've spent to try to save the city money, okay? And just to, to, to let him go would be foolish on my part, and I think it's foolish on other people's part. Well, we started out to, to try to, to be fiscally responsible to the citizens of this city, and he's been one that's done something, okay? It, it's just a, a, a matter of my opinion on, on how he's helped the residents of the city. He's spoken at almost every city council meeting, every single study session. We all know what we can get. He, he, and, and believe me, when Moby Dune runs for election, I'm going to support him, uh, e- e- even if I have to freeze standing on, on a line handing out signatures for him. But I think as an appointment goal, Zuhair Abdalhak should be appointed.
Next, we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think our choice is clear. Moby Dune has a master's in public administration. He grew up in Dearborn Heights. He's a graduate of Crestwood High School. He owns a home here. He's married to a pharmacist. He owns a business right here on Ford Road, right down the street from me. Moby Dune ran for the position years ago and came in just behind me, and Moby Dune, who I endorsed at the time for the office of city councilman, and I discussed how because of the way Columbus Day ran and the date his absentee mailing went out that he might have gotten more absentee votes had, had things spun a little differently. But Moby Dune does not have a history of attending meetings, making, uh, uh, backroom deals, making accusations, going after elected officials, including many elected officials in the Arab-American community. Moby is a consensus builder and a, uh, a member of the, the younger generation who bring, bring a lot of energy, enthusiasm, and no backroom deals to the position of city councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bazey?
I mean, I, I chose Zuhair Abdalhak because of his, obviously, his engagement, you know, with the community and always, always there for the council, you know? I mean, I did speak to Mr. Baydun also, and he, uh, he, he's, uh, you know, he is willing to learn and he's willing to, I mean, he's been watching, I know he's been watching a lot of Zoom meetings, and, uh, and, you know, he, he was aware of some of the issues, but, uh, you know, Mr. Abdalhak, you know, was very, very aware of what's going on with the community, with the city, you know, with, you know, all the things that were brought up in the past.
Abdullah?
Um, for me, I, I, I thought about it back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, and I'd really like the fact that we had the interviews. And then when we did the interviews, I knew two, I knew three, I'm sorry, three of the candidates. The fourth one I did not know of, that's why I want to see the interviews. And once I, they did the interviews, it was a difficult decision for me to make because, um, I've said it many times with Zuhair Abdalhak or talked to him by phone. He's very knowledgeable in regards to city issues, very involved in city issues. We don't, uh, always agree, me and him, and, and most specifically the audit. We were in total disagreement, but I realize that's a part of the democracy of the United States of America, and everybody's got their own opinion, which is beautiful. I do know that he's very, very involved with the city and comes to almost every single city meeting, which I, I value that very much because I love input from the residents and I love activism from the residents, even if I agree or disagree with them. So again, me and him, we were, we were not always on the same page as far as agreement as to how things should be done, but he was very, very involved. On Moby Dune's end, what I had looked at is his educational background. He most recently graduated with a master's degree, so he's got some very good education, uh, most recently, like I mentioned. He is a smart guy. I've had many talks with him and have had good conversations with him. We've been a lot more on board as far as the, which direction the city is taking. So on that, I was a little bit more on board, me and him, than I would have been me and Mr. Abdalhak, with due respect. But the final tipping point for me, and I, and I talked with Mr. Abdalhak on the phone afterwards as far as what my thought processes, because I'm very transparent, I don't hide nothing, and I got nothing to hide. For me, the final tipping point was the fact that he did get, when he was during the elections, he was the, the one just behind the last person that got in on the city council. So on that end, the residents spoke, and that's somebody that they wanted. I know a lot of the residents did like him, and that was a plus for me. So again, I went in that direction. And then also, um, being younger, what I don't like about Moby Dune is the fact that through him running, it was pointed out to me through, you know, finding out that I was the youngest guy on the council. So that, that was not good. I'm fifty-five years old, and I'm the youngest guy on the city council. So that was another tipping point for me is I wanted some younger generation. I wanted the younger generation to be represented on the city council. And although I love the younger generation at fifty-five, I'm not the younger generation. So therefore, I think it would be good to get somebody on the council in his, I believe he's in his late twenties or maybe early thirties, to get on there and just give us a little bit of a different perspective. And then lastly, quite honestly, there's been a lot of tension on the city council. there's been a lot of tension on the city council almost every council meeting for the last five, six or so years. And I'm hoping that we get some fresh, you know, mindset in there to hopefully get us away from that and get us away from this type of a thing that's happening exactly tonight. That gets me crazily upset where we can't make a decision on anything. Right now, as it looks, we can't even make a decision as to how we spell our names. That's how bad it's getting. And, and that's gotta change. So I'm hoping somebody like him can help take us in that direction. With that being the case, I still value the fact, and I told Zohair that and I'll say it publicly, the fact that he continues to show up to the city council meetings, puts in his, his input. And I just thought, maybe that's a, at least at this point, a better position for him to continue to keep us accountable and continue to give us his ideas and thoughts. Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll echo all the things they said about each, each potential uh, candidate there. Um, once again, I want to stress the point that, you know, I don't feel that the city council should be a, you know, a council member, you know, to, uh, uh, seven people out of, you know, over fifty thousand can change the dynamics of a city council. Seven people can change it where during an election, tens of thousands of people vote on it. So, but it's part of our job. So the main reason I, I voted for Zohair Abdulhaq is back in the last election, the residents voted for Lisa Hicks Clayton because they liked where she stood on issues, her personality and her views on the city. So what I'm doing, I'm forced to make an appointment or a nomination and vote for someone that the residents voted for that is most like Lisa Hicks Clayton. It's not my job to change the dynamics of city council and vote a younger person in or a, a older person in. I have all the respect for Moe Baydoun. Come election time, it's a completely different story. But I am voting for Zohair Abdelhaq mainly because he is most like Lisa Hicks Clayton, the one he is replacing. And the residents voted for Lisa Hicks Clayton for what she stands for. Thank you.
Myself, of course, you know, I adore Zohair Abdelhaq. I have nothing bad to say about him. I think he's a great person. My reason for my decision to pick Moe Baydoun is because he put himself out there. Um, he ran. It's hard to be in the public eye. It's hard to go door to door. Um, there's a lot of work to campaigning for a position. He put himself out there and I personally feel like I'm listening to the people who voted for him. I can't ignore them. They put me here and they almost put him there. Had there been five seats available, he would have been in. And it was not a lot of difference between Councilman Constand and Moe Baydoun. Um, I feel he brings us fresh ideas. His generation, they like to binge watch and I feel that he could get up to speed by watching our council meetings on the YouTube and easily fit in with us. And I think we knew, we need to bring some new blood in and train them because we're all getting older and we're not gonna be here forever. And I don't want to see all of the council leave at once when we're not bringing somebody up the ranks behind us to cover once we're gone someday. Um, so that being said, that's my reason. At this point, I do have other people for public comment. Najan Janoon? Go ahead, please.
Hello, hi, it's Najan, Whitefield Street in Dearborn Heights. Um, you know, I have to say, I'm watching the votes split three, 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 three. You know, it's just, it, it gets to be a little draining as a resident. Um, I have to also say that there are so many other ways of being involved in the city and doing things for your fellow, you know, or for the, the community, you know, like I know David Kneecik and, and, and Moe Baydoun work together to secure a three hundred thousand dollar grant for the fire department. Um, there are, again, you can attend meetings and, but yet still be connected with the city and with the residents on so many different levels. It's not just I come to the meeting and I want answers. I mean, there's, there's so many ways. And, and I know Mr., you know, Councilman Muscat mentioned all of these hours that we've, you know, they had spent. Um, I, I'm, as a resident, I'm still waiting to see what information they uncovered. And I feel like as residents, that should be presented to us. We, we should see what they spent all those hours uncovering. Um, and I'm not, I'm not saying they didn't. I'm just saying that we've only heard about all of this stuff and I, we'd like to see it. So if this is your reason, voting for somebody. Um, and I'm not saying one of the, I'm just, I, I just am saying as a resident, I, I'd like to see it. What's going on with the audit? Um, you know, we need, we need to be kept up to speed as well. I mean, we can't just keep saying we spent hours studying, you know, looking over things and really show us nothing.
Council Chair, is this, is this an open forum or is this on agenda items?
She started out speaking on an agenda item and twisted onto something else.
I apologize for that. Everybody kind of did the same thing and you know what, it just happened, but I apologize. So I, I love that. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Moe Baydoun.
To this great body, I want to first start off by saying thank you for all the kind words that were being said uh, from Bill Bazey, from Ray Muscat, Bob Constand, Councilman Abdullah, Denise Maxwell, and anybody else in case I left, I left out. Uh, I know we've been at a three, three tie. It's, it's, it's actually absurd and, and just to kind of echo a little bit what, um, uh, you know, what Councilman Abdullah was saying. Uh, to see that we couldn't, you know, the council couldn't come to agree about agenda item. I mean, that, I mean, that's just, it, it's just getting too far. It's gone too far. Um, and again, I'm not here to kind of flex on anybody or to say what I'm doing. Uh, but just to answer Councilman Wenzel's um, comment about, I know, I know Mr. Henry ran. He did a great job. He had a clean campaign. Uh, he actually received one thousand two hundred and fifteen votes. I received anywhere between thirty-seven to thirty-eight hundred votes. Uh, so I would actually have been the next go-getter. Nothing against Mr. Zohair Abdelhaq. I, you know, Zohair attends every city council meeting. I can't take that away, but I can tell you, I watch majority of the city council meetings on YouTube or after, whatever it may be. I'm watching those city council meetings. But like, uh, just to kind of piggyback of what Najah said, I do a lot for this community, but I'm not gonna go out there, take a photo or put a Facebook comment or something saying what I'm doing for this community. The residents know this. Um, so for those that are, you know, they have the argument that he's very understanding with what's going on in the city. Trust me, I know what's going on in the city. And I admit it, and like I've said the first time during my interview, I've spoken with Ray Muscat, Bill Bazey, Tom Wenzel, uh, Bob Constand, Councilman Abdullah and uh, you know, Pro-Tim Denise Maxwell. I know everything that's going on. Um, but at the end of the day, we need to do what is right for the residents, plain and simple. Uh, if you feel like standing at a three, three is the right decision for our residents, you're wrong. Everybody's wrong, including myself. But I also know that I did the work and just to remind everybody, almost ten thousand doors were knocked to my end. Over seventy thousand dollars was raised from residents in the city of Dearborn Heights. The three hundred volunteers that came out and volunteered for me, I can't, their voices cannot be, can go without being said. They wanted me here, so I'm gonna stand here every single day and then I'm gonna run in November as well. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Leslie Winless.
Mayor Pro-Tim, Council Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, um, if I talk on the agenda item, um, now I can still talk at public comment at the end because I got lots, okay, I got lots of notes here. But okay, I just want to talk about the city council appointment, um, then that's on the agenda. And I want to talk about the fact that the cost associated with doing a special election, um, every time somebody drops off for whatever reason, whether it's they take a position that conflicts with city council or they pass away or any reason that someone would step down, um, we would, we would have this huge cost to elect another person um, for one of the seats on city council, which is why, um, it's rare that you would see something where every time there's one seat or two seats vacant, the city would vote on it. That is the purpose, and I think that was Chrissy that said it, that is the purpose of us electing you all to be our voice. Um, I just watched the city of Oak Park in December, um, do their election for their city council person. And they had a really tough, you know, really tough decision. It was really hard for them, but they were able to push through and be diplomatic about it. I think the residents have already spoken, uh, which is something else that Chrissy already said, when they voted for Moe. I think we constantly come to all of these meetings, all of the interviews and, and spoke up and said, we stand behind Moe Baydoun. If you even look at the last recordings of the last meeting, how many people, how many residents spoke up and told you, we would like you to seek Moe Baydoun. I don't know if that means anything to anybody, but we are still speaking up and giving you what we would like, even if it's not an election process. Um, the reason I, I don't, I know that every time I'm on here, um, Zohair is on here. Um, but my decision to back Moe Baydoun had a lot to do with the interview process. For those of us who watch the interview process, for me personally, the answers to the questions were very argumentative. Um, the responses, and I sit on interviews a lot and I, I would never hire somebody that answered questions the way that Zohair did. And um, it could be because of his long history with the city, but I just disagree with that. I don't think you need another personality like that. You guys already have a lot of that going on. Um, you need a new perspective, you need new blood, and I think the attendant meeting thing is generational because I never attended your meetings until they became on Zoom. Um, I prefer to watch them on YouTube. I prefer to watch them on YouTube and it's because I'm from a younger generation. Um, I yield the rest of my time.
I'm sorry, yeah, you only have two minutes and, and I gotta tell people that somehow somebody thinks it's three, okay. I have Hassan. Go ahead, please. You have, you have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Uh, you know, I'm gonna take this moment, you know, if anybody that knows me knows I'm actually the head wrestling coach at Dearborn Heights Crestwood. Uh, so I've seen Moe Baydoun in and outside of our sporting events, very influential on the younger generation and I feel she is not only the right candidate, but the one that's gonna bring change, the one that's gonna bring influence, the one that's going to impact our growing young generation within Dearborn Heights. Dearborn Heights is, you know, as we know, is, you know, as, as we know, is continuously growing. We have a lot of new residents coming in and everybody within the community knows Moe Baydoun. Everybody knows the influence, the impact. He, he attends all of our sporting events. He attends all the community events. Moe Baydoun is a face that the younger generation knows, the older generation knows. And he could impact and influence so many people and so much change within the city and within our communities that there's no reason why he should not be on the city council. None at all. Moe Baydoun is the clear cut leading candidate to, to sit in that seat and he'll again be voted in November. He has the support of the younger generation. It's even support of my parents, my, my older, and the older generation that I know. Three thousand plus votes speaks for itself. If you're the runner-up with three thousand plus votes and in this last election, the runner-up had a thousand votes, that speaks volumes. And I think Moe Baydoun one hundred percent deserves to be in this role. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have iPhone. I'm not sure. I need your name and your city and county.
Sam, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. Uh, two points I would like to clarify. First of all, about the council appointment. We have, we've heard a lot of support from different sides about both candidates. Uh, I don't know if it's possible, if the council could ask both candidates, how would they like to end this, let's just call it a drama with? Let's ask both sides. This is this thing that's been going for month right now. How does each one of them would like to end it? Uh, do we need a special election? I don't think it's reasonable for the taxpayers to go waste fifty and sixty thousand dollars on a special action. So let's give each one of them a minute to let us know how do they want to end it up. My second point is, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Councilman Muscat was trying to add something to the agenda, was seconded. And for some reason, you decided not to put it on the agenda. That's not appropriate. As a matter of fact, it's a violation of the charter, man. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Zohair Abdelhaq.
Zohair Abdelhaq, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. I really thank everybody who spoke. Some of them don't even know who I am. And some spoke about how much more did for the schools. These people forget that I stood with my kids, eleven and thirteen years old, on the corners of the streets of Dearborn Heights for days and days and days and knocked on, on doors and spent my own money. And some from David Kneecik, from David, Dave Abdullah and Ray and other people. We spent months and months to pass thirty-five million dollars. I chaired the committee because I care for the schools and the kids and the value of our property in the city. When most of these people who spoke, probably they don't know that I did that. And we passed the bond after thirty-five, forty-nine years, they couldn't pass a bond for the schools. And unfortunately, some of that money was wasted. And people know exactly that one, one million dollars was wasted on the administration building in the presence of some of the people who spoke. I do have an engineering degree. I do have Department of Defense security clearance. I do have a graduate diploma in business management. I lived in the city since nineteen ninety-two. I put my time. I have the knowledge. And if anybody would like to see, especially Mrs. Janoon, you are welcome to come to my house to see the, the piles of information I have. You are more than welcome. I wish you look at the million dollars which was wasted on the city council, on the, on the Board of Education, when you are sitting and I supported you and support Nadia and support lots of people in Dearborn and in Dearborn Heights. And I supported you, Mrs. Chair, and I supported Mr. Constand in my house. He became city council chair, basically, if he would be kind to tell the people how he became the chair of the city council last time. Uh, I have, I don't pick fights, but thank you.
Okay, at this time, we are beyond the two minutes. I'm gonna ask everybody, please respect the two minutes. We're running way over for something that we should be moving forward on. Um, next we have Charles Blackwell. Go ahead, please.
Can't hear him. Can't hear you, Charles Blackwell.
Can you hear me now? Yes. I'm sorry. Um, Dearborn Heights residents, what is going on here is sad. Um, this gridlock of things not being accomplished is sad. At the next election, you all need to take a hard look at the six remaining members that are sitting on this city council. You need to take a hard look at all of them and ask yourselves, are they accomplishing your needs? If yes, vote for them. If not, take a hard flyer on a new city council member. But what is going on now is just not cutting it. Thank you.
Abby Siegel?
Hi, um, Hill Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I have a suggest, um, a comment suggestion. Um, Lisa Hicks Clayton was uh, voted in. She's an elected official. She, it's her position that's being filled. Why can't Lisa be the determining vote and break your deadlock? That's all I have to say. Um, I don't know if that's legal. I don't know if that's uh, something, you know, that is possible, but she is an elected official, official right now and it's her position and we need to move on. Thank you.
Autumn Flowers?
Hello, I'm Akwaz, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. Uh, I have one issue between the two candidates because I, you know, I do know them both. Um, I know Mr. Abdelhaq is a businessman. I drive by his place of work every day on, on my way to my work. Um, I did notice that we. I did notice that Moby, Moby Doom, uh, had mentioned something about being a business owner in Dearborn Heights. I tried to look it up. I couldn't find it. I went to, you know, to see if he was actually registered anywhere and I couldn't find it. So if he could please tell us where we can find his business registration with his name on it anywhere, um, that would help me decide, you know, whether or not, you know, I wanna swing my vote one way or the other. Thank you. That's it.
Next, we have Tarek Turfi. Go ahead, please.
Sorry. Madam Chair and Honorable Counsel, my name is Tarek Turfi and I reside proudly on Charlesworth Street here in Dearborn Heights. Uh, first, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of Mayor Dan Paletko and the entire extended Dearborn Heights family for our shared loss. My comment today is to clarify the procedural reality that our council faces with this decision. It's all about the interest of the people and it's the council's job to carry out that interest. Putting aside the people in politics here, we gotta remember that the citizens of Dearborn Heights vote in the council. And then those council members have the job of representing the citizens' interests in voting on the decisions. But to put it bluntly, our city cannot operate and make decisions when the council faces the unfortunate reality of an even number of members. Therefore, as citizens, our interest in voting for the replacement council member is outweighed by our interest in the city having the ability to move forward, vote on relevant matters, and most importantly, make decisions. The city council will not make decisions deadlocked in a three-three tie, passing the bill onto the next week's agenda and allowing basically table decisions to not be voted on, on a duly represented seven-member city council. Or, um, again, that interest is really hindering a lot of the procedural and substantive motions that come before this, the city council. And really, I, I implore the city council to break this tie. Elect the seventh member, vote on the seventh member and allow our city to, to move forward and finally make decisions. Thank you.
Next, we have Billy Amon.
Hello, Billy Amon, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. You know, real quick, I've just been listening in and I'm, and I'm hearing a lot of I do and I do and I this and I that and I saw and I did. And, uh, it, it just gets straight down to the point, you know, we need change in the city council. We need somebody that's gonna come in and, and not point out, uh, issues that are going on, but someone who's gonna fix the issues. Me personally, I, I've known Moby a long time. Uh, he's a great friend of mine. You know, I've, I've, I've been working in the community for over twenty years and, and I've seen what he can do. And I've seen the, the weight that he carries with the younger generation and the older generation. And I think he'd be perfect for the board, uh, because he's fair. I, I don't know Mr. Abdallah that good. Uh, I know he's a good man. But the way I see is we need to bring in some young blood. We need to start making changes. Dearborn Heights needs to start moving forward. We have a lot of potential in the city and we just need to tap into it. Thank you.
Next, we have Sue.
Thank you. This is Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. I appreciate the time. As the school board member, we had to vote for two vacancies. One, when Linsenya left to become the clerk and one, one Donna Ansonic passed away unexpected. Very difficult to do, but we were elected to do a position and part of that is to fill vacancies. It is not the responsibility of the city taxpayers to have to pay for another election. When we have voted in very competent people to interview and make decisions based on the candidates. I do not agree that we need to have a election or a special election. I think the city council members should do what I elected them to do in filling in that vacancy. Thank you very much.
One we will be calling on is iPad and then we need to move on. We're taking too much time on this. Go ahead. iPad. Go ahead, please.
I don't know. Is that me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I, uh, my name is Cindy Pizzoli and I reside on Beach Daily in Dearborn Heights. I am not familiar with actually either of the candidates. I've viewed many meetings. I've been at many meetings. I was part of the Dearborn, um, City Beautiful Commission appointed by the mayor for several years. And I do say that I agree with a lot of the callers that just spoke stating that we do need to go on with the new issues. We need to go on. We can't really bring up the dirt from the back in the past and try to dig up all the, we need to move forward. We do need young blood. We do need people in there that are willing to, to voice their opinion, get down to the facts and move on. This gridlock right now is really hampering us. And I do view a lot of the meetings. Of course, I can't come to them anymore, but, um, that's basically what I have to say. Thank you.
We have Vince Drapkowski.
Okay, afternoon, our evening manager, Vince Drapkowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. I guess the, uh, this kitchen remodel's already been voted on, so it just needs a signature, but I bring up the question that I'm hearing rumors that, uh, Chris would probably wants the school back. So why are we investing money in a building that Chris would may want back? Can't hear you.
This is public comment. We do not answer questions.
Right, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we're gonna move on with the meeting. Under reports from city officials, city clerk senior authorizing signature for kitchen remodel at the Berwin Senior Recreation Center contract.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with our city clerk, Lynn Senior, um, who had mentioned that the December eighth, two thousand twenty city council meeting, our body awarded the bid to the kitchen remodel at the Berwin Senior Recreation Center. However, uh, when the contract was brought forward for signature at the January twelfth meeting, the authorization for the mayor and the clerk to sign these documents on behalf of the city was not included in the council motion. And she's requesting that we motion, this motion be brought forward, which is to authorize the mayor or mayor pro tem and clerk to sign on behalf of the city the previously approved contract by city council motion. Twenty dash four three seven with Hicks Construction Company as outlined in item nine A.
Support.
For the councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I'll just mention to Mr. Drapkowski's comments, there is some preliminary discussion that uh, Crestwood would share the building with the city of Dearborn Heights and share the building with our seniors. Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel. You're muted. Councilman, you're muted.
How about that? That better? I should stay muted. Anyway, um, yeah, I echo what, uh, Councilman Constance said. It's a partial takeover or whatever potential takeover of the billion. I'm not sure what part of it. But, um, you know, it was brought to my attention that, um, uh, when I was on the recreation commission, uh, before I became a city councilman. It was approved and passed by city council and everyone to remodel the, uh, kitchen at the Richard A. Young Center. And that was, and that's, nothing has ever been done on that. Um, I just wondering why this one went through. Not to, not to say anything bad about the, you know, the Berwin Center and the seniors there. But we had something a long time ago that was passed and not one penny was spent on it and the money was allocated. And that money disappeared somewhere. I just wanna make that, uh, let the residents know about that. It was brought to my attention today by, by a resident that called me.
Council Chair, we have a motion on the floor.
I know. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we will move on to comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I, I just want to, to tell the citizens that I, I can't sleep at night. I have, uh, just so hard time getting over this. And when the mayor passed away, I, I was in so much shock, I couldn't believe this was happening. And I never imagined us being a divided council when at one time we had such unity. And, uh, you know, a lot of people have said things about, uh, you know, how can I be uh, friends with, and I'm gonna say it, Dave Abdullah, Councilman Abdullah, uh, because he and I have butted heads more than one time. Well, I, I think Dave Abdullah is one of the finest gentlemen I've ever met in my entire life. And, and no matter how many arguments we could have over political stuff, he and I can watch a football game together, break bread and, and have a wonderful time. And we have, that's, that's the kicker. And even with Robert Constant, now we're differing a little bit, but I consider Robert a very, very good friend of mine. Okay, and, and I wanna keep him a friend. So, um, you know, this is not easy for me. Okay, I, I've always had the best interest of the city at my heart and I always will. And, uh, I just want to let everybody know that this is very tough on me. Uh, I, I've got a, a gentleman, Zoheer Adel Hock, who I, who I really respect a lot, done a lot of work with him. And I've got Moby Doom, who I think is next best thing to slice bread too. Okay, so it's killing me because it's, it's right there. I, I caught, uh, a, a lot of flack when I, when I introduced, uh, and voted for Linsenya for, for clerk, but I thought at the, at that time she was the best because we had an election going on and she proved, proved me right. She proved me right. And, and, uh, you know, my appointment for the city treasurer at the time was Robert Constant because I thought it was right at the time. So, you know, I, I'm not voting, uh, for people just because I like them. Okay, cuz that's, that got nothing to do with it. And I've made, you know, uh, mistakes in my time and I, and I've said so that I've made mistakes. But, um, uh, I, I, I believe that uh, we were wrong to get here tonight because I had a motion on the floor to, uh, vote for, to open a voting for, uh, uh, mayor tonight and it wasn't, it was seconded and not voted on. And I think that's a, a violation, but, uh, I'm gonna have to go with what's being done here. I just voiced my opinion and that's it. But, uh, I, I assure all the residents, I, I, I'm not doing this because I happen just to like somebody. I'm doing it because I think it's the best thing for the city and that's all I really have to say. Thank you, uh, and everybody, please stay healthy. And, uh, hopefully we can get together again at a, at a city council meeting, uh, in person. Thank you.
Your Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, I wanted, uh, let everyone know and especially Moby doing that. I have the most respect for the guy. I mean, Beth D O, uh, twenty seventeen, he ran a heck of a campaign, probably better than anybody. And the reason I mentioned, uh, the last election is I was just saying that when, when Christie Laslow said that we should appoint the person who had the next highest votes in the last election, if she would have gotten her way with that comment, then Steve Henry would have been. So I was just clarifying a point. I'm not saying that Moby, Moby Doom got, you know, o- over three thousand, nearly four thousand votes from residents. I was just saying if she had her way, it, it wouldn't have been Mo. It would have been Steve Henry. I'm, I'm just, I'm just clarifying a point. What they doing is a very qualified person. I respect him a lot and he, and he's done a lot for the city of Dearborn Heights. Another thing I wanna mention is, ju- you know, just because council members or residents have a difference of opinion, don't get mad at them, you know, enemies. That's what we're here for. We're here seven people on this city council because we need seven different opinions. If that was the case, we just remember, we just nominate one city council member. And if they make all the decisions, but we were voted on to make decisions, like several callers or several Zoom listeners said, you know, hey, we voted for you to make a decision on this council seat. And we did. I did. And the other five made a decision. Unfortunately, it's a tie. So who, who do you, why should we change our vote because it's a tie? We're voting because you voted us in to make a decision and that's exactly what we did. We made a decision on our qualified opinion. And now you want us to change it just because it's a tie? That goes against everything you want in us to do. You voted us in cuz we're qualified. We made our opinion. Unfortunately, it's a tie. Something's gonna have to happen. I don't know what. Um, I don't think I'm gonna change my vote. I don't think anyone else is gonna change their vote. You know, maybe, maybe not. Maybe one of these might drop out. But, you know, that's, it's, it's, it's an insult for us to say, hey, we voted you and, uh, make the decision. Well, we did. We, I, I voted for Zoheer. Other people voted for Mo. You know, we made a decision. You know, that's what you voted us to do. And we're not gonna change it just cuz it was a tie. That would be against everything I believe. And lastly, I've been told by at least a dozen people, maybe twenty, that people have been offering me positions in the city if certain people were put in a mirror position. That's why, that they're, that everyone knows watching this, uh, hundreds and hundreds of people watching this. I would not accept any position in this city except for city council. I don't care if it's a hundred thousand dollars a year for picking my nose. I would not accept it because I am so busy right now with my family and everything else and city council. I tell you right now, I will not accept any position, any offer from any person that's nominated for mayor. I might get the squawk shot right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Abdullah.
Just want to point out what we've done tonight. And, and this is what's almost, I don't wanna say laughable, but honestly, it's, it's bad. So, so we, there's gotta be change here on the council. There's gotta be a change in the way we're doing things. If you look at this, we've been on here for about an hour and a half so far. And the only thing we have agreed on, the only thing that we have agreed on is something we voted on a couple weeks back. Okay, I can look at the date, December seventh. We voted on this on December seventh and we agreed at that time. It was just a missing signature. That's all that we agreed on, that we agreed our clerk will come in and sign and, and the mayor pro tem will just sign. And that's all we've agreed on. And we've agreed on nothing else. I agree with you, Councilman Wenzel. Yes, everybody's got their opinion. I totally agree with that. But this is very problematic. If we continue on like this with, you know, even votes, even votes, even votes, even votes, nothing is gonna get done. We took an hour and a half to agree to, to have our pro tem clerk senior walk in and sign something that we voted on a month and a half back. That's crazy. So please, everyone, myself included. So I'm not telling you I'm higher than thou, myself included. We gotta wake up and this is not going good. The amount of toxicity we've had on our council is ridiculous. It is absolutely ridiculous. I deal with companies every day, all day. I've been on different board of directors. I don't see this type of a thing anywhere. One council member said, you know, look at another, and I haven't had a chance. I'm not gonna say who it is. You know, uh, you see the one in Ann Arbor. It's just as bad, if not worse. And I'm gonna go look at it just to see how bad it is. I just can't believe that there's another council that's doing it this badly. So please, all of us, myself included, I'm not excluding myself. We gotta wake up. This has gotta go in a much better direction. As far as who you vote for? No, I, I can tell you everybody right now publicly, I will never vote for somebody because I like them. And I will never not vote for somebody because I don't like them. Cuz this is not about me. It's about our residents. So I voted for people that maybe me and them didn't exactly agree a hundred percent. And I've not voted for people that me and them agreed a hundred percent. Matter of fact, we hang out and everything. So let's all of us wake up, myself included, and go in the right direction, please, for the sake of the residents. Thank you.
Adam Clerk.
Yes, thank you. Um, I need some direction from the, your honorable body. I understand we're gonna have a study session for interviews. And would you like that to be set up on Thursday or on Monday?
Oh, that's gonna be a quick decision. Here we go. Let's start voting on this. Here we go.
Probably Monday, so it'll be fresh and everybody's mind when they come in Tuesday to vote on it.
I disagree.
Think about it. Stop to you.
Don't matter to me.
They're dismissing. Monday?
I will say I have a late doctor's appointment that day on Thursday. I will say I have a late doctor's appointment that day on Thursday. I know I can't do it.
Monday's good with me.
Monday I can do.
What time Monday? Cuz I have a doctor's appointment at two.
Make it by five?
Oh, I'll be here by five, absolutely.
Five o'clock on Monday, sound good to everybody?
I'll have to contact, I'll contact the, the applicants. Let them know in a, um, the same format that you did for the other ones, the five or ten minutes presentation, and then que- question from all of you.
Give up to ten minutes because it is an important position?
Ma'am Chair?
Um, I, are you, I've got Councilman Constant next.
I've got one more thing. And then I would like to know if you will put me on for your future study session so that we can go over some meeting m- meeting procedures. I think it'll work a lot easier for us.
Do it that Tu- next Tuesday?
Um, we can. Oh, next Tuesday before Tuesday's meeting, it's, we can, if you'd like to.
Um, how much time will you need?
Half hour?
Uh, we probably should do an hour the way we go.
Okay, we will put it, I will put it down. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think we all agree that uh, the council has to move forward. Uh, the city has to move forward. Uh, there was a lot of time spent, uh, I think, uh, going back and forth with uh, the former mayor, Dan Puleko, God rest his soul. And uh, the, the mayor's passed. There was a lot of discussion, was he going to run again? Was he not gonna run again? The spending of the pig money on expenses that uh, were not allowed. Eleven lawsuits, uh, that, I believe with the uh, death of uh, Dan Puleko is, is, is gone, and we, we need to have some discussion moving forward about the city, about how we're going to proceed when someone wants to do development, and not have anyone that's going to be uh, pitching battles and calling names, and uh, uh, trying to uh, garner support by uh, conducting name-calling. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You. Um, next, I'd like to state that um, bringing up Steve Henry really is a mute point because he didn't apply for the job. Mo did, and had someone else applied for the job that also ran, I would have to look at the numbers for both of them. Um, like I said, you know, it's not fair to bring Steve Henry's name into this when he didn't show any interest whatsoever in regards to.
He was the one that had, you know, it was just, it was just clarifying a point. It was just clarifying Chrissy's point. But you know, I mean, does it say that you have to, they have to apply for it? Uh, let's, let's get off of that subject. I, I made my point about it. I was just clarifying Chrissy's point that the last person, she said the last election, I was just clarifying that was, okay, then you go to the next one, or. But anyway, just go off of that right now. You know, I mean, I was just clarifying Chris made the mistake and, and, and cuz, cuz Mo did not run the last election because he was gearing up for this upcoming one. But um,
Okay.
I do have my hand up also.
Okay, you've already spoke, Councilman.
Yeah, but I want, I, I want to say something about Lynn's uh, about, I, I know that Lynn specified that we should make motions about upcoming uh, meetings and what, what takes place at that meeting. So, do we have to make a motion that we're having this special meeting because there was, wasn't voted on? Also, we need to specify who can be interviewed at this, get, is, can they walk in at day and do an, do a resume online, or do they have to have a, a application or a request in at a certain point? We gotta specify that cuz we don't wanna be caught in that, that uh, that loophole that we had earlier today.
Adam Clerk?
Okay, I know for the first one, Councilman Wensel, the motion, if we were um, calling a special meeting, we would have to have that. Okay, the motion. So, we're good on that one. And as far as the other one, that would be up to your honorable body.
We, we better, we better come up with an answer for that one because we could have ten people coming in that there, on that Zoom meeting, wanna, wanna have a interview.
Councilman, I would like to make, I would like to make a suggestion that maybe we close it down as of now, this meeting, and no more applications.
I agree. No way. We're not giving anybody an opportunity after this meeting. It's already twenty minutes to nine. That's not fair.
Let's take a vote on it.
Well.
If I, a motion is?
Hold on. Yeah, you gotta have a motion in, uh, first, a motion in a second.
Madam Chair?
I need a motion that, oh, go ahead, Councilman Conston.
I move that we uh, close the applications for the meeting, for the position of mayor, and take the uh, applications that have, have been received by the clerk and forwarded to us.
Support.
Any discussion, or you wanna vote?
Council Chair? No, it, it's twenty minutes to nine on Tuesday night. That surely doesn't give anybody time to put anything in because there was no deadline according to the, to the, to the c- council uh, or to the clerk. Okay, so now we're gonna come up and make a deadline tonight? That's unfair to people who want, maybe go forward and put it on. That is not being transparent with people. You want transparency? You gotta put a cutoff date on it. And a cutoff date cannot be tonight. That's not fair. Not fair. I might wanna do it myself.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. We will be taking a vote on it and then decide after that.
My motion wasn't even voted on.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Wensel?
Though, to close the nominations tonight would go completely against all the people that were in favor of putting this off so we could look into this further and giving the candidates uh, more opportunity. If we close it tonight, then we're, we're going against what all those people said about delaying it till the next day. It's, it's, it's redundant. I mean, it's, it's, it's absurd. Not redundant, it's, 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 you know, counteractive. It's, it doesn't make sense. You've gotta keep it open till.
Yeah, I just threw that out there. I didn't know where to end it. We gotta put some kind of end to this. But we do have a motion on the table, and we do need to entertain that before we can move on. Councilman Abdullah?
Well, I was gonna just suggest, a- and I see what Councilman Ray Muscat is mentioning, so I was just gonna suggest that maybe you make it, because to be on the next agenda, it's gotta be in by, as, as far as I know, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, what time, what time is the deadline to be?
Wednesday at noon.
Wednesday at noon, okay. So, but, but then this was not an agenda on Monday, so how about if we make it Wednesday by four P M., or maybe even Wednesday at noon, I don't know. But that's too early cuz that's same as tonight. So, how about if we made it by Wednesday by five P M., the end of the day, Wednesday, five P M., Wednesday?
Sorry, Councilman, at first, we do have a motion on the agenda. If it fails, then we can go with yours.
I amend your motion.
Madam, yeah? Add the motion, Councilman Conston?
Yes, I'll amend it to Wednesday at five P M. Tomorrow, tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, the twentieth, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M. will be the deadline.
Support.
The deadline?
For submissions for applications for mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, you would like me to repost, you would like me to repost that with the new date, the new date?
I don't believe we need to.
Or just, okay?
I mean, how, what do, what does everybody else wanna do? It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, we can repost it, so just so we're legal that uh,
It's nothing legal about it. Charter doesn't have it on there.
Ma'am Chair?
Free about it. Abdullah?
Because per the charter, we don't have no specifics as far as how we select.
Yes.
If we say applications is by five P M. tomorrow, that doesn't necessarily cut it off completely because my dad can come in on Friday and per the charter and say, hey, I wanna be an applicant, and we'd have to consider him even without a resume in. So, if that's the case, it's all on us as far as how we do it. If we're gonna do it by five P M. Wednesday, then we're gonna put in the criteria that, because it is on us, it's up to us, that no other applicants would be considered after five P M. Wednesday, cuz if we don't put that in, and my dad hypothetically, no, he's not running for mayor, my dad hypothetically doesn't put in an application, but yet decides on Monday morning, you know what? I wanna go for this mayoral position. He can, if we do it the way we're doing it right now. So, I suggest that we make an amendment to this.
I, I move that we uh, have the applications open till five P M. Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M., and that we uh, after that point, cut off any further applications and not consider any applicants for the position of mayor that have not applied after uh, January uh, twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M. Haven't submitted their paperwork to our city clerk, uh, Lynn Senia's office.
That's against the charter.
You, you said after, so you gotta say by.
Yeah, by, by five P M.
You can't say we won't, we can't consider them because we can consider, there's nothing in charter that says there's a deadline for this.
But it's up to the city council to decide how they want to interpret that.
This is, this is just the, what we're going to listen to on that Monday. Not, not cut it, we're not gonna accept anything. It's just, just what we're gonna listen to on Monday. Not that we're not gonna accept anyone's application or anything in the future. This is just who we're gonna listen to Monday. Because anybody could be nominated at Tuesday.
I, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
I agree with Councilman Wensel. The charter specifically doesn't tell us we have to go out to, to announce this. We're breaking the rules of the charter, folks.
That's not what Councilman Wensel's saying. He's saying, we, we, we can't cut it off that we.
That's right. So, so to me.
Consider anybody nominated.
Whoever shows up Tuesday, shows up. They want to, to, to speak on their behalf, we let them. We, we go through three, four, five hours worth of council meetings. We can do it and do it legitimately because the residents demand us to look at everybody. Who the fuck the telly could go for this job?
Point of order, gentlemen. Let's calm down here.
I, I am calm. I'm just saying, according to the charter, anyone who's lived in the city for two years and is a registered voter can, can apply for the job.
Yeah, Ray, this.
End of sentence.
Right, right. All I'm saying is, we're, we're holding a special meeting, and we could make the guidelines for the special meeting.
What's, that, next week is not a special meeting.
It's not a special meeting, Councilman Wensel.
It's not, not a special meeting next week. It's a regular council meeting.
No, Monday, Monday for the interviews.
That's a study session.
Okay.
That's only a study session, so.
Okay, we're setting up a study session, so we can make the guy, we can make the rules for the study session. To, to, to have an interview at this study session, you have to have your application in by tomorrow, if I, that doesn't mean you can't, you can't be nominated at the meeting Tuesday. We're just making the guidelines for the study session.
How are we going to be able to schedule people for interviews if we're gonna go about it that way? Because that's the process we're trying to keep in line.
I see. Councilman Conston's motion, second.
And I don't agree, I don't disagree with Councilman Wensel, but we, to schedule interviews, you have to have your application, your resume in by five Wednesday.
Exactly. Thank you.
I support second.
Okay, who's making the motion now?
Pop Conston.
And Councilman Abdullah, you're seconding it?
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Take a poll on this. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Conston?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Wensel?
Yes.
Melonowski? Yes. Motion passes.
Good.
Okay, let's move on here. We've got some, we can go on forever here. We've got some public, I'm sorry. We are going to public announcements. Is there any public announcements at this time? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton has got her hand up, and she is our treasurer. I'm sorry, treasurer Hicks Clayton, I'm sorry. I said it for so many years.
Treasurer, yes, thank you, um, Madam Pro Tem. So, I just wanna do a real quick announcement for our residents. The treasurer's office has discovered, and I mentioned this before, but I was asked to publicly announce at the meeting. Our office discovered there was an issue with the United States Postal Service delivery of the winter tax bills. If you used your white envelope that you received with your tax bill, your winter bill, that goes to our U S Post Office box there at the Dearborn Heights Post Office. Um, they were over capacity at that post office, and because of being over capacity and limited resources, uh, they had shipped to a secondary processing center quite a bit of mail. Now, because of that, and, and our office has been in communication with the postmaster there, as well as our Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib addressing the issue and trying to resolve it. But originally, they had told us it would be anywhere from three to four weeks delayed. However, I wanted to share with you that it could be even longer cuz I did notice on some uh, news outlets that they're looking at anywhere from six to eight weeks delay. So, those um, envelopes with your winter taxes, um, they could be delayed if you send it into the post office box, but we wanted to tell you, we are aware. We are working with the U S Post Office to resolve the issue, and it really is just a matter of delays that they're experiencing due to uh, being over capacity, undermanned, limited resources, and of course, COVID. So, with that being said, we just want you to know that your treasurer's office is not delayed in anything that we're doing. We are posting daily, and we are current, um, but we are working to get this issue resolved. And I wanted to let our residents know that I have contacted and worked with our Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabri, on the issue, and we will honor um, all of the postmarked envelopes. If you have mailed it out and it's postmarked prior to February fifteenth, which is the deadline before late fees, we're gonna waive those late fees. You will be, um, you'll be honored with the postmarked date. So, I wanted to let our residents know that. If you have any questions, please call our office at three one three seven nine one three four one zero. Again, we apologize for any inconveniences that may cause our residents, but we are working collaboratively to resolve the issue as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public announcements at this time? Next, I will go on. I have Christina Laslow.
One last time tonight, right?
And I'm sorry, you have three minutes. Anyone attacking a council member will be muted and forfeit the remaining time. Um, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm Chrissy Laslow, Charles River Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm not can't, uh, attacking, but so please don't clarify for me. I'm, I'm pretty good at getting what I mean across, and I think any one of you, anybody on this meeting who knows me, I'm very direct. I misspoke, I, but Mo Bay Doom did run for council, and Mo Bay Doom did get over three thousand votes. Steve Henry was a wonderful person, and he was my guy for council. He didn't get in, he didn't put his name in. Having said that, the council can say what they want to again, and you can vote how you want to, but this is your job to come up with somebody to go forward and point a mayor and do the rest of this year. What Treasurer Hicks Clayton said isn't a joke. It's not an exaggeration. Things will be happening. You have to vote on a council person. Look hard. Vote on somebody not the same person you voted for for treasurer, not the same person you voted for all this. Think, think about what you're voting for, and think about the residents, and think about how they're gonna respond to this too. Thank you.
Next, I have Sue. Let me unmute you.
Hi, Sue Kaminsky, seven seven four two Amboy. Um, I would like to say that I appreciate Mr. Zuhair Abdalhaq, and he did help with our millage, um, our bond that we passed for the Crestwood School District. I stood on corners with him. So, I appreciate that. However, Mo Bay Doom has also done very much for our community. He is my choice for councilman, and I'd like everyone to think about that. He does represent the younger people, and as one of the older people, I think that we need to adequately represent our entire city, not just the middle-aged and elderly. Uh, Mo was very qualified, and he has shown an interest in both school and city government since he was in high school. Um, additionally, um, we're very lucky to have so many people who care about our city and who want to take the job as mayor. However, I think that right now we need to unite our community. And because of that, I think David Kinesik has the qualifications and the backing that potentially could unite our city. We've been divided on a lot of things as councilmen have mentioned tonight during the meeting. That um, we can't agree to vote on things. We have to move forward. We need to change. And I think David Kinesik, who is a former state rep, a former senator, he is our nominated. Uh, county commissioner. He works for Dana Nestle in the state. Um, under the Attorney General. I think he has all the qualifications that would make our city move in the right direction. So thank you very much and have a good evening.
Next, we have Gary Miyaki.
Gary Miyaki, Plainfield Street. Uh, just a few comments. Um, just to clarify. Uh, obviously, a motion can't override or supersede a charter provision or an ordinance. But a motion can be used to establish a process with regard to elections, as long as it does not conflict. With the charter or existing ordinance. And then that motion itself could end up being superseded by a later motion. That would change the procedure. So a like act, an act of like dignity can be used to change a procedure that you otherwise establish. Uh, as a council that might otherwise uh. Apply or govern in the situation. I'd like to also caution the council chair. Uh, the rule is actually against personal attacks of anyone. Um, but that doesn't mean someone being critical of a council member or anyone else. Uh, further, I would like to also note that my assessment. Knowing a lot of the people is that time is of the essence with regard to making at least the mayoral appointment. Um, that's just my assessment based on a lot of discussions. And the members of the public who are watching this. Might not realize, but there has been a lot of effort by council members. To really analyze and and take all these issues into consideration. They've really, I think, probably been doing quite a lot of work behind the scenes that people are not even aware of. A lot of work, a lot of discussions, and I appreciate their efforts as far as that goes. And finally, in terms of the deadlock on the council uh appointment. I would note that if someone is appointed from the council. Uh, that may lead to a situation, and I'm not saying that that's what you should do. I'm just saying it's possible. That you could end up then having a motion to appoint uh both Mr. Baydune and Mr. Abdalhak. At the same time, because then there will be two vacancies on the council and that might end up. Uh, putting us at a position where we would end up having full seven. So thank you very much.
Raya Ciola.
Hi, um. Good evening. This is Miraya Ciola, uh, from uh, Has Street here in Dearborn Heights. This is my first time attending this meeting and for what I can recall, uh, see is. You guys have been going at the same subject going on and on and on. Why don't you look at the? Um, major position as well as the city council position as a job interview. You set a date up to this date, no more applicants. And go. Background checks, everybody does it. Why we don't, we, you don't, you oppose about that. If somebody opposes that, sorry, you cannot go. Go, do the background checks, take it as a job interview. Any company will do that. We don't need to go around and around. Yes, this goes, no, this doesn't go. Just make a decision. You got thirty days to get to the ma- uh, to the mayor. We already wasted what? How many days? Two weeks? Make a decision. And if if somebody doesn't agree with that, too bad. Make a decision based on. Um, like if he was a, I want a job applicant to a company A. In this case, it's a job applicant to a city. We need the best people. But we don't, we cannot uh spend our time going around, around and around in the same subject.
Council Chair, point of order?
Of Carrie Stoll.
Uh, you know, there's thirty days keeps coming up, people, and it's not you have thirty days to appoint a mayor. Thirty days is there, there for the mayor pro tem. To do the duties of the mayor. After thirty days, she's going to be able to do. Or he will be able to do. Other things within that thirty days. But anytime between now and November, city council can appoint a mayor. So it's not thirty days. So let's, let's forget, we only have thirty days. Uh, we don't, we have more than thirty days.
Go around and around. You interrupt too, so.
I'm not interrupting you, ma'am.
Point of order. Let the president finish out her time.
Yes. Yes, we, I I know, if it's thirty days, thirty, whatever it takes, just don't go around and around and around in the same circle. You two, you had two people. Make uh a resolution in those two people. If it's for tomorrow, five P M. No more people are accepting to go into the city council. Or a position or to the um mayor position. Make a decision to this date. We already have the time to go.
I tried that earlier and I was voted against it. So I just want to let you know that I wanted to do it tonight.
It is not up tonight or tomorrow. Make a decision. Tomorrow is the last day at five P M. We review people and such and such dates. Monday, we make our election. Tuesday, make our election. That's it.
Against the charter. Against the charter.
Sometimes you need to bypass things to make things stop.
Go against the charter.
And what does the charter say?
What does the charter say?
Charter doesn't tell us that we have to take any applications, okay? It's free for anybody to do this. You can do this.
Okay, yes. If the charter said you can take an applicant, you can modify for this.
I can't modify the charter.
I didn't say you. The city council can modify.
No.
And say, this day, this is a specific for this particular situation and later on modify it.
Madam, your three minutes is up. I will be going on to the next party. Next one is Councilman Abdullah.
Just want to point out two things from today's meeting. I do want to give uh credit to Mr. Zuhair Abdalhak. Uh, I I myself was also worked on that particular uh uh bond. And I do want to uh say that he did put in a lot of hours and he did lead. Uh, lead all of us towards the the passing of it. So good jobs with her. And I do remember a lot of time you did put into it. And I also want to point out just quickly, our current treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton. Uh, I had a resident with a challenge and a problem. I contacted her, let her know the situation. She went. Over and above and beyond and did a great job. The person was very sad, resident was very satisfied. So I just wanted to let her know, kudos. She did a great job handling that particular resident. And it made my job a lot easier to be able to point them in that direction. So thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it.
We have Leslie Winless. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points in my statement earlier because I heard a couple of people. Um, I guess rebuttal it, but I think they were talking about the wrong thing. So the thirty day thing, when I brought it up, what I was, one is not fair for somebody to be in the mayor, the mayor seat. And be doing all the job duties of that seat. And then continue to do that um with the pay not even being addressed. So to go past thirty days or to say we can go until November and somebody is doing double roles. I, that's the reason why I'm pushing for the thirty days because after the thirty days. The person who's currently doing it gets more responsibility um than what they have now. Um, the reason I brought up the Oak Park City Council is because every city council member that's in the Oak Park seat. Had a different person that they wanted to be elected for the Oak Park open seat for city council. I wa- I brought that up because I felt like everybody should watch it because there were several people. Um, where there were candidates that dropped out and endorsed the the best candidate because that's what was best for the city. There was another person who wanted someone else but changed their vote. So that's the reason I brought up Oak Park. Um. Hello?
Hello.
Oh, sorry, I think my phone cut out um when I was talking, but I'm not sure what part you guys heard or didn't hear. Um, but I also wanted to know who runs the interview process if the, if uh the, we have somebody being council pro tem. Well, she's council chair and she's mayor pro tem. So who runs the interview? I know the last time she ran the interview. For the um city council seats that were open. I wanted to uh thank Treasurer Hicks um Clayton. Latanya Gator and Carrie Halton from the District Seven School Board for reading books yesterday um for our Martin Luther King Junior event. Um, and that's it. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Okay, next I have iPhone Tom.
Yeah, hi, Tom Wenzel, uh, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. I've um, a couple of people and some councilmen have uh stated that um. Uh, this deadlock is not, nothing's getting done on city council. And I've attended almost all the city councils recently. And I haven't noticed anything business-wise not getting done. The six people that are on the city council. Are doing the business of the city and they're doing a good job. I I agree that there should be a seventh. But to say that nothing's getting done is a complete false. The city is getting run, all, everything's being voted on. And to my best recollection of watching these meetings, I don't think anything. As far as voting, except for the uh open positions, has been tied in a deadlock. So it's a misconception that nothing is getting done. Everything is getting done by these six people who we elected and they're doing a great job. Thank you.
I have iPhone. Go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
Sam, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. I can't be any more disgusted than tonight's meeting. Where you can say. Not only myself wasted three hours, but I do believe the majority of the councils have wasted three hours of their time. I did place two question earlier and never got a response for neither one of them. My question will be directed to the clerk. Uh, there was a motion placed on the floor by Councilman Muscat and it was seconded. And it got just, you guys just ignored it. According to the charter, that's a violation of the charter. Since everybody keeps talking about violation of the charter, that's a violation of the charter. To my understanding, if I'm not mistaken, this meeting was supposedly to be taken consideration of the mayoral uh appointment. I do, I have heard everything about tonight's meeting, but besides taking care of the mayoral appointment. Last council meeting was being cut off, which was a violation of my freedom rights. And I would like to ask you again, you are making a statement on Facebook that you are the mayor of Dearborn Heights. What's your clarification for that?
It is mayor pro tem.
No, it's a mayor of Dearborn Heights. If you are the mayor of pro tem, okay, if you are the mayor of pro tem. There is no reason for you to be touching the mayor's vehicle, using the mayor's vehicle, or even coming near the mayor's vehicle. You personally have made accusations. There's nothing funny. You made accusation to Mayor Polacko that this vehicle was illegally bought. So don't touch it, don't use it. It does not belong to you. It's our vehicle. We are taxpayers. And do you want to answer me regarding uh Mr. Constance, uh, Mr. Muscat's motion?
Um, yeah, I heard them, I heard the motion, but prior to that, um, Councilman Wenzel. Changed his uh vote on the original motion. So that carried. It was carried as the agenda was approved as submitted. Without.
Okay, so, so by the charter, you can just ignore that motion?
No, sir, it was, the agenda was approved.
The agenda was approved with add, with an additional by Councilman Muscat to take care of business of the mayor's position.
The original motion was to approve the agenda as submitted. And that's the motion that passed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, Ray Muscat, Havilax Creek, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. Um. Ladies and gentlemen. I said this before, and you know, it it's very difficult to do this job. It's not easy. Um. That's why a lot of people don't run. Some people run because they wanted to see about getting things accomplished. We're all forgetting that we don't even have a corporation counsel. What we, we, we don't have an attorney. This is the fighting that's going on now because we have, I have nobody to go to. That'll give me legal advice on how to, how this is supposed to work. Okay? We even brought forth a motion to bring back a corporation counsel. And 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 for some reason, it didn't go through. Uh. I'm flabbergasted at 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 this. This is not, and 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 Councilman Wenzel is correct. We are still doing the business of the city. We're paying bills. We're okay, we're asking questions to department heads. Uh, I know I try to do that via phone calls or emails. Uh, uh, Director McIntyre answered one of my emails today with a question that I had. We are conducting business as usual, regardless if it's six people or seven people. This is not an easy thing for people to do. Uh, we're trying to do the best thing that we can. And 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 you, the the division here is no different than the division in Washington, D C right now. Okay? It's not easy. It it's very, very difficult. And and you make it all sound like we're a bunch of buffoons or something. Uh, doing this. Everybody's got their good points, every, every, but and and I'm gonna tell you again, I am not going to violate the charter. Because people think that I should go ahead and vote. And 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 have a cutoff date or time to put something on, uh, on for uh someone who wants to apply for for the mayor's position. It's against the charter rules. The charter doesn't say we have to do that, okay? And I'm not gonna violate the charter. And that's what you put me there is to uphold the ordinances and the charter of the city of Dearborn Heights, and I'm gonna do it. Thank you.
Chair, we can't hear you that well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miyaki, you already spoke once. We don't give a second time. You know the rules. Any others that want to speak at this time?
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Uh, Councilman Muscat, you're, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, ended, go in peace. We'll talk to you. Have a good night.